Okay, thank you. Welcome back. We are returning from executive session. And I just need a motion to open the public meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, who is that?
Krista Berardi.
Krista, thank you. And a second.
I'll second it, Sonia, it's Carrie.
Okay, thank you. And I just need to go through the roll call. For all those in favor. Or opposed, Krista Berardi.
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham.
Yes.
Eric Rutzner.
Yes.
Danny Hines.
Yes.
Lynn Niles.
Yes.
Scott Seaman.
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. Seven yes, zero opposed. We are back in. Motion passes, we're back in an open session. So welcome and thank you everyone for your patience. We had a bunch of issues just there. But we can jump right into the agenda. So we waived the pledge for our web-based meetings. And we'll move right into our administrator remarks. So can we start with Dr. Gash?
Good evening, thank you. Our administrators are busily engaged in planning for our end of the year celebrations and are discussing what those celebrations look like in this current crisis. So starting with the high school, a letter went out last evening to seniors and their families that describes our current thinking around how we're going to honor our class of 2020 graduates. So I'll just take a moment, if you don't mind, to recap where we are with that. First, of course, is our commencement ceremony. Mrs. Lauren Cole, one of our high school assistant principals, is heading the committee of students, teachers, parents, and administrators. We are working in coordination with our school physician, Dr. Cossaro, who you met at our last in-person board meeting, as well as our regional safety expert through BOSI, Mr. Frank Gugliari. We're taking into account what we're able to do, given the governor's executive orders, as well as our social distancing and best practice guidelines from these experts. So it seems like most high schools throughout the region are involved in drive-up or drive-in type of ceremonies. We have a couple of options that center around this drive-in idea. And those options were discussed a little bit today with the committee. So we're definitely still finalizing plans. And those plans will be informed from guidance from the governor and our county executive, as well as finalized costs for the event. I should also note that the committee, in addition to the commencement exercises, has discussed supplemental activities that can happen now, such as car parades, in-person photo opportunities with parents, for example. And these are all ideas with graduates and their families, as well as in the fall, such as a graduate parade and being on the football field during the homecoming football game coin toss. So we're making sure and putting our, really, our best thinking together. We know the entire community wants to support our graduates, so we are most definitely incorporating that into our planning and into our future communication. So as we continue to get the latest guidance, to gauge the wishes of our graduates, and consult with our local experts, we're going to do all that we can to make this the best celebration possible for our class of 2020 graduates. We plan on anticipate, we anticipate on communicating more concrete plans by the end of this month at the latest. Another key ceremony for our high school seniors is senior awards night. That was scheduled to take place on June 17. As you probably have heard, we are working closely with organizations such as the BEF, Brewster Education Foundation, and the PTSA to fund scholarships. So additional information on the celebration itself is forthcoming. And we'll make sure that we, as soon as we're able to finalize these plans, that we get those communications out early and often, in order to make sure that we make our graduates feel that we're engaging in their celebration of their accomplishments as well. In terms of the moving up ceremony for eighth graders, Mr. Clark and Mrs. Hernandez and their team are planning a virtual celebration. Of course, plans are still to be finalized with that. And while there's a lot more going on, not just with end-of-the-year planning, but with everything from continuity instruction to digital distance learning, I just want to thank all of the staff and the teachers for supporting our students and going above and beyond in order to make this work. I'd also like to thank the parents for their ongoing partnership and continued support and communication with us throughout this process. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Harrington?
Great, thank you, Sonia. So I'd like to first begin by recognizing the employees, of course, from our food services, transportation, and facilities departments for their good work in maintaining continuity of the distribution of meals each Monday. There's simply too many names to try and acknowledge. Last week, the district distributed 606 meals to children in need. And this week, while I don't yet have an official number from Ms. Hancock, I do suspect that the number was close to the same. Just on a personal note, I just wanted to express my own personal gratitude in having an opportunity to work alongside members of the SEIU each week. Kind of a spirit of altruism, as opposed to sometimes this cloud of angst that sometimes seems to exist when you're the director of HR, when you're interacting with employees in the district. So it has been a joy for me personally each week to have an opportunity to get to know more employees in the SEIU. And certainly want to personally thank all of them for their good work and helping to maintain that work each week. Also, the board and public will note several probationary appointments on this evening's consent agenda that will commence with the approaching school year. These appointments largely reflect vacancies from retirements. I believe we have a number of these individuals signed in with us this evening. I'd like to share my pleasure in meeting with each of these candidates and learning about their experience and their expertise. Certainly, as a former building principal, I've been impressed with their knowledge of pedagogy, best practices of instruction, and content area knowledge. And I certainly want to commend our building administrators who have worked diligently to secure these high-quality candidates despite the circumstances of this unprecedented time. Congratulations to those individuals that are up for board appointment this evening, and we look forward to their many years of success in supporting the students at Brewster. And finally, this evening, we welcome Ms. Lauren Zagorski Truel, Brewster's new confidential secretary to the superintendent to replace the large shoes to be filled by Susan Gavin's retirement. On behalf of the district, I'd like to express our congratulations and a warm welcome to Ms. Zagorski Truel. But we'll certainly defer any future welcome for Dr. Banlow's remarks. And that concludes my statements for this evening.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Carlson?
Good evening. A quick one for our budget presentation. We have a budget, excuse me, with an audit committee meeting next Tuesday, May 19th, to review our internal audit report, posterior report on human resources. And it was a very complimentary report, so I want to acknowledge Dr. Harrington for his and his department's efforts in getting a good report for our internal audit. I want to just let the board and the community know that although we are closed, there is a lot of work being performed within the district, specifically with our facilities department. We have a number of small projects going on to enhance a learning environment, especially at JFK. We have a door replacement project that's going to be undertaken in a few weeks. We're upgrading and adding air conditioning to a number of classrooms in the kindergarten wing. So I just want the board and the public to be aware that there are quite a few facilities upgrades that are happening during this extended closure and making the best of that situation. And with that, I will reserve the rest of my comments for my budget presentation.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Banlow? Did we lose her?
I was, good evening, everyone. Sorry, I was on mute. Just want to update the board with a few important details that I wanted to share. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the Putnam County Executive Director and all of the superintendents, mayors, town supervisors in Putnam County to meet with Mary Ellen O'Donnell, the county executive. She's going to be talking to us tomorrow about reopening Putnam County and what that means. And we want to take that opportunity as superintendents to kind of run past her a few of the ideas we have for our graduations. As you know, Friday, the governor will be coming out with another announcement, May 15th. I think on that list is approval for drive-ins. So there's several things that we're going to go over with her, so I'll keep the board apprised of that conversation. Also, as Dr. Gash had mentioned, and I promise not to repeat some of the things that she said already, but all buildings are in the process right now. We meet with our leadership team once a week. They're in the process of putting together end-of-the-year activities. Dr. Gash did mention virtual tours of buildings because we are very, very, we're also cognizant of how important it is for our class of 2020. We're very excited about them. We also have a few surprises up their sleeve that we're not going to put out there until graduation day. But we want to make sure that our students that are staying with us, that are transitioning to other buildings, are able to do a virtual tour of buildings. So you'll be seeing a lot of information, Board of Education members, from our building principals throughout the weeks and the two months that we have in the school year ahead. We are also meeting with the Safety, Health, and Emergency Planning Committee twice a week, not twice a week, I'm sorry, every other week. We are starting to plan for our holtful re-entry into the district at some point. But as you know, we're going to be waiting for directives coming from the Department of Health, our school physician, there'll be a lot of guidance coming out from the governor. But with that said, our entire district departments are starting to make preparations of what we would need to do to make sure that our students and our staff are safe. And then the last thing I have for tonight is just a comment about the Brewster Education Foundation. I was really excited when I joined the district. I learned that it was the first education foundation ever in the state of New York. It's a beautiful, beautiful foundation. It does run separately from the district, so the foundation has their own, it's a not-for-profit, it runs on their own. However, I just want to let the board know that it is going to be a rebuilding time for the foundation. So we wish them luck, and they'll be looking for some extra trustees. So I just wanted to put it out there for the community to hear as well. Thank you, that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you so much. And for my comments this evening, just a continued thank you to the work everyone's doing and, you know, reaching out to families and students and trying to get us through just what we're going through. So that's it for me for this evening. And do we have our student representative here this evening? Did I see him? Did we scare him away last time? I don't know. He might have. I don't see him. Okay, so then I'll check in with him after this meeting to see if he'll come back next time.
I'm here now.
You are?
I am now, I think I was an attendee before, but they...
There you are, great. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. So as Dr. Gash mentioned, the committee evaluated alternative graduations for the class of 2020. Met again this morning, there's some great ideas, and the community has been providing, community students and parents have some great ideas of their own, so we look forward to hearing more of those. Currently, senior athletes are being highlighted by their coaches. And Brewster students at the high school over the past four years have been involved in the raising of funds for the Water for South Student Organization. The project started with this year's seniors, class of 2020, when they were freshmen, and continued by the current junior and sophomore classes, has raised over $11,000. That money has provided for the drilling of two wells of communities in South Sudan. That's all my comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we move on to our presentations, recognition, discussion for the evening. And it's our 2020-21 budget update. Mr. Carlson?
Good evening. I want to make sure that I'm able to share my screen and also that my mic is working. I understand I was a little garbled than the last time.
Yep, you sound great now, thank you.
Better, okay. I'm going to need to be able to share my screen, or I will share my presentation with Jim.
Okay, we'll give you some time.
And also I'll share with Chris.
I just gave you sharing permission, sorry. There we go.
Okay. Here I go, all right, I see it now. Thank you much. Okay, is my screen being shared?
Yes.
Yep.
Very good. So we're also joined this evening by a member of the board's council, Mr. Dan Pettigrew. He's going to help us navigate through some of the tricky provisions of the governor's latest executive order. So this budget process, obviously, it's been extended. This is now our seventh budget presentation, budget update, really. And I'll begin with the governor's latest executive order, 202.26, and first begin with updates with regard to the trustee elections. So the governor extended the due date for nominating petitions from April 20th to May 11th. He suspended the requirement of having a number of signatures on the nominating petition, obviously due to social distancing requirements. However, all other requirements for running for the board must still be met. Individual must be over 18 years of age, U.S. citizen, and resident of the district for at least 30 days. On the ballot, the absentee ballot, each trustee will be listed in alphabetical order. And, you know, because there are a lot of changes in this executive order, I did want to invite Mr. Pettigrew to assist in presenting this. Or if the board has any questions on either, any of these next three slides, by all means, you know, I'd like to take a pause and wait and ask and see if the board has any questions with regard to this provision of the executive order. All right, doesn't seem like there are any? And I'm hoping that my mic is working and you can hear me?
No, you're good. Doesn't seem...
Okay, very good. All right, I'll move on. So here's the biggest change. So with the budget vote, so now the budget vote will be performed by absentee ballot. With those ballots due no later than 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, June 9th. So the timeline, which on our agenda is an action item, adopting a revised budget development calendar in accordance with the governor's latest executive order.
Victor, we lost you, your presentation, and you, you look like you're muted again.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna text him.
Okay. I hope he's not just doing the presentation.
No, he's probably. We got a call.
Hi, am I back in?
Now you're in, okay.
Okay, all right, I apologize for that. So I will, I'll back it up here. So I'm on slide three, I hope that... Do I need to go back further than slide three?
Well, we have to see what it is, it's not showing yet.
Yeah, you're not sharing it.
I have to share my screen.
Yeah, or you could share with Chris or I, and we could share our screen, and we could play Vanna.
Okay, I'll do both, I'll start off, you know, I'll start off going, and if I need to, then I'll kick it over to the two of you. Does that work? Okay. So can everybody hear me?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, all right, so with regard to the budget vote, the executive order extended all of the pertinent dates for the budget vote, including the date of the budget vote, which will now be Tuesday, June 9th. Most importantly, the budget vote will take place by absentee ballot, which must be received no later than 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, June 9th. So it's an important distinction between the ballot being physically received by the district and somebody postmarking it on June 9th. So we need to physically receive it on June 9th, no later than 5:00 p.m. in order for the vote to be counted. So there is an action item on tonight's board agenda for the adoption of a revised budget calendar, which is in accordance, of course, with the governor's latest executive orders. And that calls for budget adoption to take place on next Tuesday, May 19th. A week later, we'll hold our informational budget hearing. So this is the requirement where, you know, folks are able to call in or ask their questions in live public comment with regard to the budget. And again, important, may, excuse me, Tuesday, June 9th is the budget vote date by absentee ballot, and it must be received by 5:00 p.m. on that date. So make sure your vote counts, allow adequate time for postal delivery. And again, I'd like to pause and invite any questions from the board for Mr. Pettigrew to answer with regard to the budget vote.
I have a question, Victor. And I don't know if we have the answer, because again, the guidance has been so, I think, a little vague. But, you know, what if I forget, and I'm looking at a calendar and it's June 9th, you know, is there any way for us to drop off our ballot at the district office in some way? I don't know if we have a social distancing solution, or if it's even legally allowed? Does it have to be a postmarked returned envelope? That's one question, I have another, but I'll let you answer that one first, if you know. Or Dan?
So, yeah, I mean, I can respond as of today. And also, we're going to make sure that all of these questions that are asked this evening and any of the other questions that were asked, you know, via email over the course of the next few weeks, that we compile them in a Q&amp;A document and put it up on our website, because it is all very confusing. So with regard to folks being able to drop off their ballots, you know, of course, in the executive order, there is no reference to, you know, hand-delivering ballots. It's obviously encouraged that folks submit their ballots by, through the mail, obviously to, you know, to encourage social distancing. Internally, we can discuss, you know, ways in which we can make, you know, make it available so that folks can drop off ballots. But we'll have to figure out how we could do that logistically, recognizing that we still need to make sure that we comply with those social distancing requirements. So we'll certainly, you know, be devising a plan over the course of the next couple of weeks, and we'll make sure that we put that in our Q&amp;A document, that's going to be developed over the course of the next few weeks. Dan, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I think you, that was well-stated, Victor.
I have another question in terms of... Yeah, I don't know how to phrase it, like, not guaranteeing, but how do we, how is the return ballot being tallied to know that it belongs to any given person, you know, rather than just a random submission?
Hey Sue, could I ask that you jump in on this? Who are you there?
Yes, yes, so we've contracted with NTS Election Services, and they have assured us, or, well, they're pretty busy, but they have told us that we will be able to scan each of the returned ballots, because it will have a barcode, which is connected to the actual register voter's registration that we obtained from the Board of Elections. So we will have a handheld, I believe, scanner, as I said, to scan in each of those ballots. That will be obviously cross-referenced with the Board of Education, I mean, the Board of Elections registration list.
Okay, and then Susan, since you're there, normally, when we have absentee ballots, there's a different process in place for that, but we're most familiar with the, you know, coming in person and administering your, you know, vote that way. Can you just go over a little bit what the processes for absentee ballots in terms of how the physical counting of it happens? Because it's now a much larger scale, it's everyone?
Sure, so we receive all the ballots in, we record them, we match them with the lists that we receive from the Board of Elections, so that we know that someone has not voted personally. They voted by absentee ballot. You are not allowed to open those ballots until the close of poll at 9:00. So once that happens, we go with the election inspectors and the chairperson, and we begin opening the ballots. They are allowed to be witnessed by the public, so we announce where we're going. It's just in the high school, as you know, it's just up the hallway in a room. We generally don't have anybody from the public at that time, but they are entitled to witness any opening of the ballots. So as this is going to be a much larger scale event, I believe we might be live-streaming it to some degree. I don't know how many days it will take to count all of these ballots.
And then we get our answer.
Victor, just for informational, is the post office going to come to our building at 5:00 with whatever they have received? Or we get our post office throughout the day?
We get our post office throughout the day. Our mail courier goes to the post office and asks them for any ballots that have been delivered that day. And he knows they're to be returned by 5:00. So he picks up anything that's in the post office until then. And they can be dropped off in the past, they can be dropped off at the office.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
I have, I'm pretty unfamiliar with absentee ballots, and I'm just wondering, does the district send them out? When do they send them out? When do people receive their absentee ballot? And how does that process work?
So that's actually in the next slide, if you'd like.
Okay.
I mean, I'll skip to it, and then I'll come back to it. So with that, with this executive order, we're required to put out three separate mailings. So there's a postcard notice, which our residents should be receiving about now. I think they were mailed out on Friday, and I understand some folks in Patterson may have received them already on Saturday. So if you can still see my screen, here's what the postcard notice will look like. It's very basic. The requirement is that we notify the public that the budget vote will take place by absentee ballot. The important dates is that is May 26th, the date of the public hearing, and then June 9th, the date that the ballots are due. We made sure that we added this caveat in at the beginning, what to expect, letting folks know that the annual budget notice newsletter, which we mail out every single year, you can expect to receive that still. And in addition to that, you'll receive an absentee ballot with a prepaid return envelope. And again, we encourage residents to make sure they allow adequate time for the postal delivery of those ballots back to the district. So I think to answer your question, I think you had asked, when will we be sending out the absentee ballots? And we'll be sending them on or about Tuesday, May 26th, which is two weeks before the budget vote. You know, as Sue mentioned, the post office is very much aware of this requirement. You know, they understand it's every school district in New York State. I just learned that our mail for the absentee ballots is actually going to be routed through the White Plains Post Office, which is the regional post office. And if that's the case for Brewster, that's the case for every other, you know, school district in the region. So White Plains is going to receive all of these absentee ballots for all of these school districts in, you know, in that region. I would be much more comforted if I knew that it was going to, you know, they would be delivered to our local post office and delivered on our local routes. The fact that we have to go through this regional, you know, regional office, you know, certainly concerns me. And, you know, we're doing the best we can with the limited timeline. We're pushing out the absentee ballots two weeks before the budget vote. So, you know, again, we're doing the best we can with a condensed timeline.
Thank you.
So just going back to the budget vote process and the dates, any other questions?
At any time, yeah, if anyone has a question as we go through it, just, you know, if you think of something.
So again, I mentioned the required mailings, the postcard notice was sent out on Friday. Again, you should have been, you should have received it probably by now. If not today, then you should have gotten it, you should get it tomorrow. The budget notice newsletter, we'll be sending out on Tuesday, May 26th, along with the absentee ballot. And these are going to be separate nailings, again, because the absentee ballot is being handled by NTS, with barcode scanning and pre-applied postage, again, running through, you know, the White Plains, you know, Regional Distribution Center. Our budget notice, we actually bundle them in district and sort them on behalf of our local post offices, and we deliver them, and they just, you know, drop them off to every single household in the district. So you're going to get, you may get these on different dates, you might get the budget newsletter in advance of the absentee ballot, you may get the absentee ballot in advance of the newsletter, depending on the timing of these two distributions. Our goal is for the newsletter, I apologize for that, I, again, I... I apologize for that. Again, our goal is for the budget newsletter to be received in advance of the absentee ballot, but we're, you know, largely reliant on the post office and the timing of these two mailings to coincide or at least have the newsletter be received in advance of the absentee ballot. We certainly want an informed public before they cast their vote. I'm just going to continue to check in so that I don't, you know, ramble off. So can everybody hear me? Am I still on?
You are.
All right. So I did get a little bit ahead of myself before. With the executive order, because the budget vote is delayed so late, there's no provision in the executive order for budget revote. So in a typical year, we would have our budget vote the third Tuesday in May. And if the budget fails statewide, there's a revote day, the third Tuesday in June. Because June 9th is our first vote, it would be impossible for us to hold a revote on June 16th. So we really only have one chance to pass the budget. And if the budget fails on June 9th, the Board of Ed must adopt a contingency budget. And, you know, that's, of course, it's not meant to be a scare tactic or anything like that. It's just the simple reality of the situation is that we really only have one chance to pass the budget. The budget fails, the board has no choice but to go to a contingency budget. Again, in a typical year, the Board of Ed would have another opportunity to go out and either present the same budget or a reduced budget or go straight to a contingency. In this circumstance, we are forced to go straight to a contingency budget. There is no budget revote. So with a contingency budget, district cannot exceed the prior year's tax levy. So I showed here, in 1920, our tax levy was 77.1 million. Our proposed levy in 2021 is 78.3 million, an increase of 1.2. So if we were forced to a contingency budget, it would require $1.2 million worth of reductions. So it's definitely a concern. I don't want it to be a, you know, again, not a scare tactic, but it is the simple reality of the circumstance. Can everybody hear me?
We do.
All right. Thank you. Dan, since I do still have you here, any other input with budget revote? Contingency budget?
Yeah, so in order for a revote to occur, the governor, as you pointed out, there's no way under the current law that the revote could take place because the third Tuesday in June happens to be June 16th. And depending on how many ballots you receive back, when you may not even be done counting all the absentee ballots in time to have declared the results, in time to even put together a new ballot, for the board to reconvene, adopt a new budget, have a budget hearing, and then a revote. There has been some discussion perhaps that the governor would consider revote for schools on June 23rd. To do that, he'd have to issue another executive order. But we have to remember that June 23rd is the primaries. Under prior executive order, he determined that all the primaries, and of course, people have been following the presidential primary. At one point, the Board of Elections said, it's not going to happen. Then there was a lawsuit brought and it's going to happen on June 23rd. So it's unlikely that the governor would issue an executive order directing a revote. So I do think, at least from all signs, you're correct, Victor, that it's pretty much a one and done. So you'll get one, the board will have one shot at the, for the voters to vote on the budget it adopts next week. And if that budget is not passed by the voters, in all likelihood, the board would have to then adopt a contingency budget for next fiscal year.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. So what is contingent? You know, we've talked about this in past years and it's actually pretty broad with regard to the things that are considered in a contingency budget. And it's basically those services necessary to operate and maintain school buildings, preserve the property of the district and ensure the health and safety of students and staff. So that's set forth in statute. The board ultimately determines which appropriations constitute ordinary and contingent expenses. And of course, as a matter of practice, it's always the prerogative of the board and administration to make sure that we make any reductions as far away from the classroom and as least impactful to students as we possibly can. So you see here at the bottom, we have listed of some of the things that would typically be removed from a contingency budget and those include equipment, any planned equipment purchases, renovations, and then of course, you know, unfortunately, it starts to impact kids, extracurricular clubs, athletics, electives, and advanced placement courses, certain student supplies, and then ultimately staff position. So, I mean, that's the unfortunate reality is we often say we are a, we're in the service industry. So, you know, about 80% of our budget, 75 to 80% of our budget is salaries and benefits. So unfortunately, within a contingency budget, it would certainly require the reduction of services. Does anyone have any questions with regard to contingency budget? And can everyone hear me?
We can hear you. Yeah, I'm waiting to see what else you cover before I see if I have more questions.
All right. Okay, so moving on to state aid update. So as we've discussed, I think it was at our April 21st board meeting, we informed the public that the state would be measuring their own finances at four measurement periods, April 30th, June 30th, December 31st, and then March 31st of 2021. Not surprisingly, the April 30th measurement period has come and gone and the state's revenues are well below expectations. And again, not surprisingly, because we've been shut down since mid-March. In all likelihood, the June 30th measurement period isn't going to be, isn't going to have a great outlook either. So what we've heard in press conferences from Governor Cuomo, Controller De Napoli, and also Budget Director Mojica, is that because the state's finances are in such bad condition, it could result in a reduction in school funding by as much as 20%. Now, that 20%, we're still unclear of what that really means to each district because the state has not yet released what it would look like with each, for each individual district. You know, my take on it would be that it wouldn't be a 20% across the board reduction and instead they would protect New York City and other high need school districts. Brewster, in terms of state funding, is not considered high need. So 20%, you know, would probably not apply across the board. Instead, you know, a district like Scarsdale would probably have an 80% reduction in aid. Matona may have a, you know, 60% reduction in aid. Brewster might have a 30%. Whereas, you know, a high need district like Yonkers may only have a 1% reduction in aid. So it's very unclear. Again, you know, you know, it's a lot of news, you know, clippets and not a lot of substance at this point. And also, you know, taking the other side of it, we also are hearing in the news that there is lobbying going on at the federal level for states that were impacted by the pandemic, that they would receive additional relief through another stimulus. There is bipartisan legislation that's being proposed at the federal level, termed the State and Municipal Aid for Recovery and Transition, SMARTAID. But again, it's unlikely that any of, either of these will be resolved anytime soon. And of course, the Board of Ed and every school district across the state is required to adopt the budget by next week. So we just want to, you know, again, inform the board and the public that there are those concerns out there. At this point, they've not materialized. But, you know, we are keeping an eye on it. So, you know, we're really between a tax levy and a state aid because our revenue budget is 95% made up of these two items, both of which are limited. Tax levy, we met with our Budget Advisory Committee and Combined Finance Committee meeting in mid-April. We were able to reduce our tax levy from 2.5 down to 1.5, utilizing surplus funds from the sale of Garden Street and also from the extended closure. And with regard to state aid, we're already receiving less state aid or we're due to receive less state aid next year than we are in the current year. So it's very, it's a very difficult situation in terms of the revenue side of our budget, which we need to be mindful of. So, you know, we're asking ourselves, well, what happens if this actually does come to fruition? Unfortunately, it doesn't seem like it will be resolved anytime soon. And again, we need to adopt a budget next week. We need to make sure that we're flexible and adaptable as more information becomes available. Of course, we've been having preliminary conversations about what that might look like. And unfortunately, some of the services that, you know, we may need to, you know, forego if we do have a significant reduction in need. On the other hand, the state or the federal government may, you know, provide that relief to the states and local governments. So it's really, you know, it's really a murky situation and we just need to keep, obviously, our eyes and ears open and, you know, start planning now as we are preliminarily without, you know, going to extremes because we don't know what the end game is going to be. And just as a, you know, as a note about Brewster, we are very well positioned to mitigate this circumstance. So we are in a good position financially. If we were to have an unanticipated revenue shortfall or expenditure increase, which are not uncommon, and I put down here that it's pouring out. So we often talk about rainy day funds. You know, if there was ever a need to dip into our fund balance, now is the time because it is absolutely pouring outside. So I just, I really just want to bring the calm in that we're going to be able to get through this. We certainly will. But we need to wait and see what happens at both the state level and the federal level before we react to it. So, you know, again, we're, we have our eyes and ears open and, you know, preliminarily, we're discussing, you know, what it might look like. But before we panic, we're going to make sure that we have a complete picture of what next year will look like. And unfortunately, we won't have a complete picture of what next year will look like until probably the middle of next year. So, I mean, I think it's important that I stop here and ask if anyone has any questions with that.
Well, I think just maybe more of a comment or that, you know, it's just, it's like, it's not enough that we're in the situation we're in. There's more on top of it. But I do appreciate you covering, you know, the fund balance piece. I'm not sure if everyone who's on the call, I mean, I know the board, but if everyone on the call knows exactly how that works and what that's about. But it's essentially, you mentioned a savings account where, you know, required to keep every district's required to have this. There's a minimum that's required that you have to have always kind of there. And that if we faced these uncertain times, you know, some months down the road, we would be able to not completely drown. And so I don't know if you want to add to that for just to clarify, you know, how that works.
That was, that was a perfect explanation of what it's for. Because I would have butchered it with technical terms. So that was a perfect explanation of what it's there for. And, you know, we often refer to it as rainy day funds, you know, which is why I, you know, quoted here that it is pouring outside. So our Budget Advisory Committee and Finance Committee had a combined meeting back in April to review our fund balance. You know, one of the, or probably the only bright spot during this extended closure is the cost avoidance that we've been able to, you know, experience. And because of that, we're anticipating a surplus in our fund balance for this year, not to mention the sale of Garden Street. So we met with the Finance Committee and Budget Advisory Committee and devised a plan to rely on our savings in this year in particular, recognizing the need to reduce the tax burden on our community. And through that effort, we were able to utilize an additional, or additional funds to balance the budget and then simultaneously reduce the tax levy increase. So again, instead of a 2.5% tax cap, which we always use as the benchmark, we were able to lower our tax levy down to 1.5%. And just looking throughout the region, you know, every school district is different and, you know, I really shouldn't do this, but just to compare other districts, most districts are in the, you know, low to mid 2% in terms of tax levy increases for next year. So we are among, in Brewster, we're among the lower, lower end of districts in the region.
Does anyone else on the board have questions or comments to add to this part of the presentation?
Victor, just real quick, in regards to, you're talking about expenditures and the uncommon circumstance that we're dealing with right now. Do you see our, I don't know if that ties into this, but do you see us in regards to our supply, in regards to purchasing PPE, that can be a driving force to increase our expenditures going into the next year?
Well, actually, what we're going to do at the end of this year, and we've already begun doing it, is we need to make sure that we are, you know, stocking up for next year. So with the surplus that we're incurring this year, we're going to make sure that we cut purchase orders using this year's money to purchase those supplies that we're going to be needing for next year. So, you know, again, what we've learned through this experience is if we, you know, were to experience another closure next year, which we hope we don't need to do. But if we were to have an extended closure next year, you know, the district really avoids more costs than it incurs while we're closed. So I don't see the need to increase our budget for next year, you know, for that additional PPE. Now, moving forward in future years, not knowing what that's going to look like, that would certainly be a consideration maybe moving forward in future years. But entering the 2021 school year, we're going to be stocking up on supplies this spring. And again, we already have, and we will continue to stock up on supplies this spring that we would then be using, you know, when students return in the fall. That's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
Victor, you mentioned savings, you know, while you're, we're, you know, not in full daily activity. Can you maybe just cover with some of those, when some of those savings are realized?
Sure. So, well, I would say probably most notably is obviously diesel fuel because our buses aren't being run. You know, we're still subject to DOT inspections. So we still have the DOT coming and inspecting our vehicles, even though they're largely unused. So we're saving obviously a ton of money in diesel fuel. We received a credit from our insurance company because we're not running those buses. So we negotiated a credit with our insurance company. Other, you know, service needs, you know, student, you know, tutoring and things of that nature, we're able to avoid. But most notably, really, again, going back to the fact that we are a service industry, is really the reduction in overtime and substitutes and things of that nature. So that's really been the, you know, the largest cost avoidance. Again, we are a service industry, so it's, you know, avoiding the overtime costs, the, you know, substitute costs and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the board?
I just wanted to make a comment that I just, it seems unfair that we don't, you know, we're only really going to get one shot at passing the budget. And I'm just, maybe this is more of a question for Dan. You know, we haven't been through this kind of situation before. It's, don't school districts have some kind of protection as far as, I guess, a situation like this that's so out of our hands? And yet we still have to stick with these gates for passing budgets and that sort of situation?
Yeah, Krista, so you've been dealt a pretty poor hand. I would agree with you. I think prior to the governor's executive order, there, just so you're aware, there was a lot of discussion at the state level among the advocates for public education, New York State School Boards, the New York State Council of School Superintendents, Teachers Union, NICE, school administrators, really trying to push that there, that we not have an opportunity to vote. There'd been discussions perhaps that if districts just be allowed to adopt a budget and then that would become the budget for 2021 without having to go to a vote. And then all of a sudden, on May 1st, with really no warning, there was really no warning that this was coming when it did, the governor issued this executive order which basically said, all communities will have a right because that's what the state law says, that the taxpayers have a right to vote on school budgets. And so he, but because he fixed the day so late, I mean, if you think about it, ordinarily, your vote, your statewide vote is the third Tuesday in May, which is next week, in fact, when you're, when you're scheduled to adopt your budget. So that allows enough time that if the, if the community speaks and decides to defeat a budget, you could go back and have another shot at coming up with a new budget and do a revote. It's just because the executive order says you're voting on June 9th. It really allows absolutely no time to have a revote, not to mention the fact. That you're, you know, under the education law. You usually are used to a registrate, registered voters coming, uh, either registered with the county or the school. Coming on in May and they, and they cast their vote then. He decided that this vote would be purely by absentee ballot. Um, and so by do, and, and said that every voter will have. A, a ballot and a postage prepaid envelope to return it. So. The cost to the taxpayers is uh, obviously much more. Uh, than you probably budgeted normally for an election. So if you do it once and to have to do it a second time, even if the governor decided to have a second vote, uh, it would probably be uh. You'd be spending even more money to have everybody vote. So it, it, there's really no recourse for the board. I mean, we're, we're stuck. The governor has. This power to um, to modify and to suspend laws. Under the state of emergency. It's a, it's vast powers. And so um, because he has this uh. The, the state legislature gave him this power. Uh, as a district, we're obligated to comply with the law. And so. Trying to make the best of, of a very, very difficult session. Unfortunately, your community will only have one opportunity to, to vote on the budget.
Thank you.
Victor, can I add one thing to Krista's question? Krista, I just want you to know that the, the New York State Council of School Superintendents, as Dan said, and the Lower Hudson Regional. Consortium of Superintendents, we continue to advocate. Um, so they do listen sometimes, but not always. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're back to you, Victor.
Okay, so just, I, I'm wrapping it up now. So just, again, this is our seventh budget presentation. So, you know, I'm not going to belabor it. We've done that over the. You know, of course, in the past uh, five months now. Um, so our revenue budget in summary, uh, the, the details presented on our, on our website, it has been since uh, the April 21st meeting. Tax levies are, are major revenue source, an increase of 1.1 million or 1.5%. Again, as I mentioned, our tax cap was about uh, 2.5%. And in meeting with our budget advisory committee and our finance committee, we were able to lower our tax levy down to 1.5% utilizing. Uh, surplus funds, as you mentioned earlier. Local sources is increasing about 800,000. Um, and the main cause of that increase is a. Uh, transfer of funds from the debt service fund to help offset. A correlating increase in our debt expense on the uh, expense out of our budget. Uh, net of a significant reduction in interest income. Uh, so we had to reduce our interest revenues, obviously, in light of the fact that the Fed cut interest rates to uh, to zero in, in March. Stay in federal aid, I mentioned state aid is already down about 400,000. So um, you know, the state is uh, really. You know, the, the biggest wild card in our budget picture for next year. And appropriate fund balance and appropriated reserves, uh, this again is, is what was discussed with our budget advisory committee and finance committee. So uh, the combination of these two items is a $3 million use of our, our savings, both the restricted portion, which is. Uh, restricted for uh, specific reserves like TRS reserve, ERS reserve, tax service or uh, et cetera. Uh, the appropriate fund balances, the unrestricted portion, these are the rainy day funds that we talked about. Um, so in total, our revenue budget is 103.9 million, an increase of 2.9%. Moving on to the expenditure side of our budget, uh, general support increased by about 900,000 and. The, the main reason for the increase is actually the result of two reclassification. So. Uh, we reclassified the SRO contract, which is about $485,000. Uh, from the instructional portion of our budget to the general support portion. Uh, as well as the centralization of our copier and printer contracts that we centralized. Uh, from each um, department and, and school buildings. So really from the instructional side of our budget to general support. Um, so notably, the instruction uh, budget is actually only going up about 300,000 or 0.7% and that's due to. Those reclassifications. So if not for those adjustments. Um, you know, the majority of our budget increase, of course, would be in the instruction area of our budget. Transportation actually had a decrease of about $100,000. Uh, due to the uh, relief of a one-time equipment purchase that we made in 1920. Employee benefits increased just 3.2%. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, with our debt, we are issuing a bond in July and that's increasing our debt, uh, just in the 2021 school year because. Uh, we're actually doubled up for the bond anticipation note, which is a short-term borrowing. And then the subsequent bond that we issue. So we're, we're doubled up in the initial year of issuance, which is 2021. Again, we're utilizing. Uh, proceeds from the debt service uh, fund in order to offset and mitigate that increase. So there's absolutely no impact whatsoever. Um, on any other area of the budget, those uh, net to zero. Uh, transfers and special aid fund, capital fund remain the same, about $500,000. And in total, our. Expenditure budget, 103.9 million, an increase of 2.9%. So uh, again, on June 9th, our, we have our budget vote, absentee ballot. Uh, budget is 2.9% increase, tax levy increase 1.48%. Again. Uh, we reduced that from uh, 2.5% with the assistance of the budget advisory committee and finance committee. Um, I hyperlink to the um, proposed budget on our website. Uh, proposition number two is for the purchase of buses. We discussed this way back on February 25th. Uh, important to note that we received state aid for about half the cost. So it's really a. You know, buy one, get one free proposition when it comes to our bus purchases. Uh, we're requesting uh, the purchase of nine vehicles for a cost of $730,000. And the first of the five annual payments doesn't impact the um, 2021 budget that we're discussing this evening. It's actually deferred for an entire year. And we make our first payment in 2122. Uh, so there is no impact on, on our budget for, for next year. Um, so. Yes.
Just a quick question. So we, because there's some concern with, you know. Where the state aid will fall with other things, but with the bus purchasing, it's in its own separate category?
Yeah, so it, that's one of the things that's really undefined at this point. So um, you know, we don't know if it's a 20% across the board reduction. Or if it's 20% of foundation aid, which is, you know, our largest aid component, but it's. Um, you know, it's not tied to any, um, you know, like expenditures, like bus purchases. Transportation aid is its own aid category and there is no indication right now that it would uh, impact our transportation aid. So really, I, I mean, we're, we're uncertain of what that means.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, you know, looking forward to next, next year, um, you know, before this pandemic hit. Uh, we were in a very good position uh, in terms of our budget. Um, we are still in a position where we're actually proposing. Uh, three new positions uh, to be added to the budget pending state funding, which of course, we're going to be evaluating over the course of the summer. Uh, however, going into 2122, next year is probably going to be a lot more challenging, if that's even possible, if you could believe it. Uh, more challenging than this, than this year. So we're anticipating that the consumer price index will be very low, which is the. The largest uh, component of the tax cap and the tax cap being the district's main source of funding. Uh, representing about 75% of our, of our budget. Uh, the state obviously is uh, struggling with its own finances. They've already introduced a new. Um, you know, a new reduction that they're calling pandemic adjustments. So we've been, we had our, our aid for this year already reduced. Uh, by pandemic adjustments. Uh, because we're relying on our fund balance, we're not going to be able to rely on it. Uh, to, you know, to a higher degree in future years to mitigate, you know, future state aid shortfalls. Uh, the stock market has taken a bath. So uh, ERS and TRS, um, it's anticipated that the. Um, contributions will go up due to their uh, poor investment performance. There is a, a, a safety net within the uh, tax cap calculation. However, the district must have absorbed the first, the impact of the first 2% of a rate increase. Um, so, and then any amount above that is uh, considered an exclusion or an add-on to the tax cap. Um, and it is anticipated that we will um, probably see increases in, in TRS and ERS. That would trigger that, um, you know, that exclusion add-on to the tax cap. Um, our um, enrollment in the career tech ed program has increased in each of the past few years due to the success of that program and obviously. Uh, student interest as well as the fact that um. It's a requirement that the district provide this opportunity as a pathway to graduation for our students. And lastly, obviously with this pandemic, we're certainly going to see increases in our, our health insurance costs going forward. So. It, it's a gloomy outlook in 2122. Um, our current year construct of our budget again is a positive one where we're adding three positions, hopefully with uh, with uh, state aid if it comes through. Um, and really our, our, you know, our goal is to build on the success that we've had. Going into this 1920 school year, uh, and continue it beyond. So we're, you know, we're hopeful that, um, you know, folks will come and. You know, come out and support the budget. Um, important dates to remember. So with the governor's uh, newest executive order. Uh, we have our meeting this evening. Budget adoption is now going to take place on May 19th. Uh, followed by the budget hearing a week later, uh, allowing two weeks between the budget hearing and the budget vote. Uh, via absentee ballot. Again, that allows us more time. Uh, for the post office to deliver the budget newsletter and absentee ballots. Um, so that's why we chose to have our budget hearing, you know, a week after budget adoption, again, to allow more time for processing. So if uh, any questions, please uh, email us, budget@brewsterschools.org. You know, again, we're developing a Q and A document that we hope to put out um, as soon as, you know, as soon as we receive more questions and. Um, you know, as new questions come in, we'll certainly be adding to it uh, over the course of the next few weeks. And as always, please visit our website. So uh, this presentation, all of our past presentations are uploaded to the website. Our budget statement will be posted to the website uh, next Tuesday, which is a, a mammoth. Um, like a hundred-page document that has a, a ton of information and schedules. Um, you know, related to the budget. So I certainly encourage everyone to uh, check back on the website next Tuesday. Um, any questions?
Victor, yes. So first, I just want to ask if anyone on the board has any questions. Um, at the completion, you know, now, as you finish this presentation. And then I do have just a couple I want to address that came in from the community. Um, so does anyone on the board have any follow-up questions on this presentation?
It's fun to see. I mean, I guess the only good outlook with the. Lowering of all, um, you know, our interest rates and stuff across the board, we should have, expect some type of savings. When our debt goes out, when we put out our, our ban and our bonds coming up, there should be some type of, not a significant savings. But there is something in that that will offset other increases. Hopefully enable us to, you know, to keep treading water.
Yeah, I think we're in a better position than so many other districts. And I mean, we're just blessed that that's how it worked out for us. Um.
Yeah, Victor, um, so I know you were talking before about the um. The budget uh, surplus that's going to be this year and it's going to be going forward. You talked specifically about some of the different. Uh, things that you've been able, savings you've been able to find. Are those negotiations and those conversations still ongoing with different vendors and providers? Or do we think we have a pretty good handle on, on where we're at and, and what, what it's going to look like, what those final numbers are?
Yeah, well, we've, we've encouraged every, you know, budget manager, every, you know, principal and director to, to reach out to those that they could easily identify. Um, you know, sometimes it takes an invoice to be received for us to say, wait a second. Um, you know, we didn't, you know, we didn't need this, this month. Uh, and that would obviously trigger a discussion that we would then reach out. Um, so I would say that it's still ongoing. Obviously, you know, there are, you know, um, you know, specific items that are easy to point to. Um, you know, such as uh, refuse removal. Obviously, you know, we're not filling our dumpsters. So we reached out to our. Our refuse removal uh, company and, and, you know, made sure we negotiated a, a reduction there. And it's not necessary that they show up every day. But rather they show up, you know, once a week. Um, so really it is ongoing. And, and again, sometimes it's triggered by the fact that we've received an invoice. Uh, for something that, you know, we hadn't anticipated. And, and again, that would then trigger a conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, so um, we did get a few. Just questions and comments that came in from the community about budget. And um, one of them was just, you know, concerns about the long-term picture. Um, you know, because we're trying to also kind of predict the future and, and what's being presented here today. And no one knows, no one does. We don't know what the governor is going to do, the federal government's going to do. Ultimately, um, so we kind of have to manage our own world here, but um, just concerns about, you know, how can we decide today what's going to happen tomorrow? And unfortunately, we're, we're required by law to make some of these really tough decisions. Um, for me, as a response to that, I would say that I, you know, I think. The tax is going to happen regardless. You know, we saw that we could potentially go to a contingency plan. Which cuts automatically 1.2 million dollars, I think it was. Um, right, right there. And, you know, I, I think with this budget, you know, Victor, in your presentation, you've gone over. Uh, the many ways where, you know, you're working to manage the savings, if we can call it that, but the way that. Um, we're finding some savings in the district right now. And then how we can manage fund balance as well as, you know. Ironically, Garden Street happened to sell this year, and so that's there as well. So all these kind of factors do help us. Manage what we have and, and going forward to manage what we need to do. So. Um, it's just a tough situation we're in, as we've talked about. But we hear, you know, we hear people's concerns. We, we have them too. We live here too, and we're facing the same, same hardships. Um, and then the other questions that came in just had to do with uh. Again, where are you finding those savings? I think you talked about them earlier, Victor. And one more specific question that came in had to do with our SROs um, and our SPO. Victor, I'm not sure if you can talk about that and, and, and how that looks while we're not in school right now.
Um, sure. So our SRO contract, uh, we are continuing to pay the SRO contract to the county. Um, that is the same as any other school district in the county. Everyone has agreed to continue to pay the SRO contract. And really, it's the same tax base. So if Brewster Central School District wasn't to, uh, to pay them, it would be coming out of county taxes. Um, as well. Um, more recently, we, we um, had a question with regard to the uh, special patrol officer. Uh, just this afternoon, I spoke to the uh, Putnam County Commissioner of Finance, Bill Carlin. Um, he informed me that the county would not be billing the district for uh, the special patrol officer because they are. Uh, hourly employees and they are not being paid by the county. So therefore, the county would not be billing the district. So that, that's been the uh, understanding. Since the, the start of the um. Um, you know, extended closure and that continues to be the case.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me just check through to see if there's any other questions. Uh, specific just to the budget. There were other emails with other questions, but I will address those as we continue through the meeting. Um. I think you, you talked about different contracts, you know, what was, you know, where you, we realized some savings. Um. And stuff like that. So I think, yeah, I think we've addressed most of that and we'll continue to um, you know, address it. And also, like you said earlier, we're going to put out. The uh, the question and answer. Um, you know, sheet of information so that people can review the things we've covered in our meetings and, you know, things you've posted. Um, okay, so I think that's it for me on budget and.
Can I just ask a follow-up question about the SROs?
Sure.
Um, you know, uh, obviously they're not in the schools right now because the kids aren't there. Um. When and if, you know, we're obviously going to have a lot of these um, graduation, you know, like we talked about, maybe a parade, a car parade or. Some sort of graduation um. Uh, ceremony for the kids, you know, we would probably, we're going to need. Uh, the SROs or sheriffs, you know, to help organize, you know, and, you know, especially like a car parade. Obviously, we're going to need some assistance from the sheriff's office. So is that something that. You know, we're going to get without cost? Um. You know, how will that work? So we can at least sort of um, try and get something out of the fact that we're paying the SROs?
If I can, uh, there was a meeting today of the uh, graduation committee. Uh, the detective Kreski does, um, deputy Kreski does sit in on the committee. And there has already been discussions about the allocation of, let's say, the troops. I spoken to the sheriff. They're ready to allocate up to eight additional troopers. For the specific purposes of whatever graduation we do. If it's a drive-through, to pray, whatever it is. Uh, they've talked to them about shut. If it's a drive-through, to pray, whatever it is, uh, they've talked to them about shutting down roads, what roads are need to be necessary. Uh, there has never been any mention of, uh, additional cost. Um, I would hate to think that they're going out of their way to do this and then drop us a big bill, but I mean, it's something to consider, but they have allocated resources in case we do need them. And I believe they do also send over the SROs, uh, from more often to drive through the school properties to make sure they're okay. And we were doing the light up on the Friday night, uh, the SRO was there to make sure things were all right. So they were allocating, uh, some of the resources as they could.
Yes, Scott, thank you, thank you for answering that. And yes, we, Carrie, we will be continuing to utilize SROs. They're, they actually are still helping us periodically if we need them for a variety of different things. And as the end of the year comes about, we'll be using them for a variety of activities as Scott has mentioned.
Thank you.
Sonya, can I add one last thing to the budget? I just, I just want to thank, um, Mr. Carlson, his department, the budget advisory committee and the finance committee. This has been no easy feat for anybody because of the constant changing and we are hanging on every single word that comes out of the governor's office. I know Victor is with the budget, all of us. So, um, I just want to thank the Victor, his department, also Susan Gavin, this has been a huge, huge job for you organizing all this. And the, but, I mean, the finance committee and the budget advisory committee, their, their, um, recommendations and expertise is priceless to all of us. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now on the agenda is, uh, actually public remarks, uh, that may have come in, an email from the community relating to any action item and, uh, that's on the agenda for today. And just double checking, um, specifically for the action items, we did get just one, um, on, on comment on one of the, uh, topics with, which has to do with some of the stipends that are on the agenda for action items. And just concern, you know, how, how that's being managed and why, um, in times like these. So I know when we get to each item, we can, uh, discuss them a little more, but that was a concern that, uh, was raised. So, okay, so we'll move on now to action items. And first up is approval of Westchester Putnam School Board Association proposed budget and nominating committee slate. So, uh, anyone want to talk about that? Or I guess I, I can, it's just Westchester Putnam School Boards Association is, um, an organization that, you know, represents the, the local districts of Westchester and Putnam, and they are our local advocacy group. So while we also belong to NISBA, which is a New York State, every district in New York State belongs to, Westchester Putnam is just for our local districts. And we have local conversations and we have local meetings that are set up, um, well, not this moment, but, uh, with different, uh, you know, legislators. And we have discussions about our needs in the district personally and, um, just other resources that they provide. So, uh, this, their annual meeting is coming up, I believe it's next week. And, uh, this is our yearly kind of responsibility to vote on their proposed budget for the work they do for us and, um, you know, their committee slate that's presented this evening. So I don't know if anyone on administration wants to add anything on that?
I'll just note, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'll just note that, uh, the increase is about 1.5%. Which is obviously a minimal increase.
Yep, okay, thank you. So for this, I need a, a motion in a second to discuss this item from the board. So a motion please. Anyone jump in there?
I'll make the motion, it's Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie, in a second.
Scott, I'll make them, the second.
Thank you, okay. Um, so we can have a discussion now for asking any questions on this item, if there are any.
Victor mentioned it's a reasonable cost and I know he gave us more information at the last meeting as well. So if financial guy says it's okay, it's okay for me.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Sonya, I would just say, you know, they do a lot of the training that we attend and, uh, and they'll lobby up in Albany for us. I mean, you know, this Hudson Valley region, Westchester Putnam, we have so many different, um, issues that come up that are kind of unique to us. You know, we're kind of caught between the upstate need and the New York City need and it's very easy for us to get left behind. And this group does a very good job of making sure that, that our voices are heard when the decisions are getting made, so.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, so I think we just go to the vote. Um, give me one second, my list. And, uh, we'll start with Krista Berardi, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Heinz?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Uh, with no, with, uh, so it's seven yeses, zero nos, and motion passes, seven zero. Okay, and Susan Gavin, I know you're there. If I, uh, mess up, please stop me and let me know. It's tough keeping track of all this technology-wise. Okay, um, we now move on to action item number two, approval of revised 2020-21 budget development calendar pursuant to executive order number 202.26.
Uh, yeah, so a, as I mentioned, almost all of this is, is driven by the governor's executive order. I'll note that, um, the budget, uh, adoption date is on Tuesday, May 19th, that's a special meeting. Uh, all of our other meetings had already been previously established in our, um, normal board calendar. Uh, the budget hearing will be on Tuesday, May 26th. That will allow us then to send out our budget, uh, newsletter and the absentee ballots. Uh, and again, the budget vote via absentee ballot with, uh, ballots received no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 9th. And it is our hope that we will have, uh, completed the, uh, counting and the board will be able to accept the results of the budget vote trustee election at the June 23rd
Okay. Thank you. So, um, for this item, I need a motion and a second, please.
I'll make the motion, it's Krista Berardi.
Thank you, and a second?
Carrie Cunningham will second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on this action item from the board? Okay, hearing none. Um, we'll go to a vote. Krista Berardi, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Heinz?
Yes.
Glenn, you with us? Was you, was you there?
What was it to get off mute on the phone, star six?
Star, I think star six, yeah. Glenn, you there?
Yes.
Okay, what is your vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I needed to make sure which yes was for what. Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Um, seven in favor, zero opposed, motion passes, seven zero. Okay, move on to action item number three, approval of 2020-2021 Board of Education meeting calendar.
This, this calendar is put before the board this evening for their approval for the 2020-2021 Board of Education meeting calendar.
Okay, thank you. Um, I need a motion in a second, please.
Eric makes the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
Danny seconds it.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Krista Berardi, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Heinz?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. With, uh, none opposed, motion passes, seven zero. Okay, action item number four, approval of varsity boys swimming to participate for the third year on the swim team merger with John J. Cross River and North Salem.
Yes, uh, this action item is for the Brewster High School Boys Varsity Swim Team, uh, to again, participate with John J. Cross River and North Salem in a team merger for swimming.
Okay, I need a motion in a second, please.
I'll make the motions, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn, and a second?
Uh, Scott, I'll make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Um, as a father of somebody on the swim team, I appreciate it. Uh, they were a little concerned because they had a fair number of, they had three graduating seniors this year and they weren't sure they were going to be able to put a team together, but just the option of them to do it would be, it's very nice. So thank you on behalf of the swimming people.
Great, thank you.
And what's the, uh, I mean, obviously not right now, this is, we approve stuff now for, when does swimming happen? Next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, next year.
Um, okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Krista Berardi, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Heinz?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. With none opposed, the motion passes, seven zero. Okay, we move on to action item number five, approval of MOA with BTA regarding instructional technology specialists.
I'll take that one, it's Masika. Um, so the proposal submitted for your approval tonight asked for additional compensation for instructional technology specialists in our district. We have one specialist per building. Um, these are teachers who have a full teaching load and receive a stipend for providing professional learning support. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows this is different from some of the tech support staff in the tech and innovation department. Uh, the, the people we're talking about tonight are teachers who help other teachers be more effective when using digital tools. Um, so we're asking for, uh, this compensation for four individuals due to us asking them to work on days that they were not scheduled to. So those are the snow or the emergency closure days, um, leading up to our March, uh, virtual learning, uh, professional learning session, um, as well as the spring big break days. Um, these individuals, these four individuals helped to plan our professional learning day and then provided sessions on what would have been, um, their, their spring break. Um, so if approved, we would be using federal grant money from title grant funds. So these are specific funds we get from the federal government earmarked for professional learning. We would be using those, these funds for those purposes. So again, this MOA is proposing additional compensation using federal funds for four of our teachers who worked on days that they were not scheduled to teach, uh, in order to plan for and implement professional learning.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please, on this item from the board?
It's Krista, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, and a second?
I'll second, it's Carrie.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments on this item from the board?
So this is basically budget neutral, if I understand.
Yes, these are, this is federal grant money earmarked for professional learning, correct? So it does not come from the general budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions? Yep.
I was just going to say, these specialists are assisting teachers with how to better use, um, you know, online teaching methods and things like that. Not all teachers are as savvy as other teachers at that, but that's what they're focused on instructing the teachers, correct?
Correct, yes. And this was a huge lift for us to get everything up and running as quickly as we did and we absolutely could not have done it without them.
And this was all, uh, in preparation for the online learning, the, the, the shutdown? This wasn't work that normally they would have done during the school year? This was only because we were hit with basically getting, you know, closing the schools and, and having to do instruction from home?
Yes, correct, absolutely. On days that they were supposed to be snow days and spring break days in preparation for that virtual learning day. And then after the virtual learning day, um, they were holding sessions on what would have been their spring break.
And, uh, three days is, is probably hourly accurate for how much time they spent? Or, or how would you describe it?
So the three days, the way, uh, based on the contract rate would be about 18 hours. I can tell you based on sessions that I was with, in with them, as well as Mr. Trelor, it well exceeded those 18 hours, for sure.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. So on this action item, Krista Berardi, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Heinz?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. With none opposed, the motion passes, seven zero. Okay, we move on to action item number six, approval of MOA with BTA for co-curricular clubs.
Yes, thank you, Sonya. So this MOA reflects a requested change. It was initiated at the building level prior to school closing that recognized the increased depth of work that has grown within each of these clubs, Bearfax and Model UN. Specifically, Bearfax produces four print editions per year while maintaining an online presence that's updated daily, while Model UN has evolved to include additional regional interscholastic conferences as well as an additional overnight experience. Per the BTA contract, the procedure for requesting such changes were initiated at the building level before being presented to the district office for amendment to the contract. Uh, as with items of agreement, it has been reviewed by our district council, is presented for board consideration this evening.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this action item, please.
Uh, Eric makes the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
Andy seconds it.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this item?
The, the procedure for this started, well, I guess, well before the shutdown, shall we say? It's not like this is something we're looking to now. We've been looking to do it the full year as the club has been basically active for the full year.
Correct, the, the timing here is, is unfortunate, uh, but this was a conversation that was, was happening prior to school closing and was anticipated. Thank you.
At this point now, um, do we know what, uh, you know, we have another issue coming up with the coaches in a minute, but do we know the, the level of involvement that the, the UN and the, um, and the Bearfax advisors have had with their students since we've been out?
Sure, I can't speak, uh, with absolute confidence in terms of, of being able to clearly communicate what the expectations have been since school has closed. Uh, I don't know that I can do that for, for any of the clubs, uh, that we have paid those stipends in its entirety, given that they had been appointed at the beginning of the year, but that's certainly information that I can find out specifically from those advisors.
Okay, and, and at this point, so we had an agreed upon stipend and then we started the process of trying to bring them to a level that we thought was more appropriate for, um, the workload that they were doing. And then Corona hit and now everything's been on pause, is that, I mean, that's, that's what we're...
That's correct.
The increase in the stipend is basically that the recognition of what's going on, that, that those positions deserve a, a different rate?
Correct, there was advocacy, be given the growth of that work, uh, in each of those respective clubs so that they were on par and really reflected, uh, the nature of, of the work that was involved to really provide a, a broader and greater experience for the students who participate in each of those clubs. The yearbook was used as a frame of reference with respect to, uh, the Bearfax so that it's comparable, given, given the scope, uh, of work that's involved.
Does anyone, go ahead.
Can I add one thing, Sonya? Also, prior to COVID-19, if you took a look at the Bearfax, our newspaper, anyone who sees that, that's outside the district, it is so impressive, number one. So the, the, that, it's just incredible. The Model UN, the, the weekend activities, as Dr. Harrington had mentioned, and the level of work, that, that is the reason why, um, it was brought to central office attention by the, by the, um, the BTA and also the building administration. So they, they just do phenomenal work and it's just unfortunate with COVID-19 that we're in this situation.
Um, there was a question asked and, and Eric, I think it was you, you didn't get the full answer. Does anyone feel, which would need to be a motion, does anyone feel the need to table this item to get the answer to that question and put it on the next agenda, which is actually just next week? Or, um, do you feel okay with the information you have to con... is actually just next week, or do you feel okay with the information you have to continue with this action item?
I mean, I would be, I'm comfortable voting. I mean, I think I have an idea. Well, no, it probably should be tabled. I don't want to say that. It should probably, I would probably advocate for it to be tabled till the next meeting.
So, we can make, you can make the motion for that, we can second it, and we can vote on whether the group wants to table it, and if that passes, then it would be tabled, and if it doesn't, then we would go back to a vote.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table until the next meeting.
Okay. Does anyone second his motion to table this item?
Yeah, Daniel seconded it.
Danny seconds it, okay, thank you. So, I guess we can, there's a discussion, it's always part of it. Is there anyone who wants to discuss the tabling of it, or can we, I just go right to the vote on it?
The tabling is to find out if they're doing anything currently that would...
That seems like that was the question, right, Eric? What have we, what's, like, how are we finishing off the year, or what were they doing since we closed?
Yeah, correct, kind of get an idea of sort of what those positions have looked like since the middle of March when we closed the schools.
Yeah, I just would think that since this was a discussion prior to the shutdown, it's not that we're giving them additional money to perform activities during the shutdown. We were giving them more stipend to realize the extent of the work is at a higher, as it should be, probably to make it more comparable to other school districts or to other similar jobs, maybe similar to, let's say, the yearbook. I don't know what the stipend is related to that, but I'm not sure if that relates directly to what they're doing now as to what the original discussion was.
Yeah, I mean, my thought process is even if the, if the amounts that we're looking to raise the stipends up to are appropriate for a full year of work, but unfortunately, we only got up until the middle of March out of those two clubs, then I think it would be more appropriate to talk about that at the organizational meeting next year when we kind of go for the full, you know, for looking at a full year's worth of, you know, what we're going to do. I, I'm not saying that I don't think that these people deserve it, I just think it's a hard thing to have an advisor get an increase in their previous rate, as deserving as it is, but in these times, and if we don't really have something from middle of March until the end of June, to then say, well, we're going to go ahead and sort of up your rate between now and then, I think that's, I think that's a better conversation at the organizational meeting next year.
Okay, and with the concept being that if they are continuing additional work, then it will be something we could discuss. Otherwise, you are right, I mean, it raises to stipends are normally handled one time a year, and it's probably better to do it in that fashion.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't want to, I would like to hear the answer to the question before we start discussing exactly what's, I think there should be a second conversation once we find out what the level of involvement has been, but I think I'd just be comfortable waiting a week to find that out specifically.
Okay, so we can, go ahead.
Is that okay, Sonia? So, if I may, just up until school's closure, the level of involvement certainly consisted of a daily update to the online component. The advocacy in terms of the Bearfax was really driven from the greater scope of work in terms of the online publication and the daily updates to the publication in an online format. I'm not sure exactly where the Model UN was in terms of the nature and number of those experiences, both regionally and the two overnights that had originally been requested and advocated for and were being planned. I will also just share that there, I think from the perspective of the BTA, there were some procedural components that were lost in terms of what the process could have and should have been in order to expedite this and ensure that this was something that happened at the organization meeting, not a conversation that's happening now in May. So, there were some procedural components that unfortunately didn't come to my attention, the district's office attention in a timely manner, and that's unfortunate. And here we are in a situation where unfortunately, you know, this request is being made at a time when school has closed, but in terms of the scope of work up until the point at which school was closed, there was certainly an advocacy and a communication that happened at the building level, and then in turn eventually reached district office to advocate for the increase in the stipend.
Sure, Sonia, can I respond to that? So, you know, I hope I'm not giving the impression that I'm looking to discuss, I think there's a separate discussion as to whether or not those numbers should be raised. I'm not a huge fan of mid-year adjustments, but I know they are at some points appropriate, and if it got this far and came up through the building level, then it's definitely a conversation that's worth having. And it might be unfortunate that they were undercompensated going forward, but to make the correction now, especially if it comes to find out that the interaction with those clubs has been limited since the middle of March, you know, that, I would feel more comfortable making a vote noting exactly how much work's been done from March to June, but believe me, Brent, I completely understand the idea that, you know, this wasn't something that just sort of got thrown out at the last minute, absolutely.
No, I understand.
Okay, so we can vote first on whether the group wants to table this and get that, rest of that information, but if, you know, or if everyone's just ready to go to a vote, or the, you know, however the majority votes. So, let's go to a vote on whether or not we want to table this item until the next meeting, which will be next week, and then we'll go from there. So, we motioned and seconded, right? Yep. So, Krista Berardi first, how do you vote on tabling this until next week?
I want to table it.
Okay, so, yes.
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Hines?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. So, with no one opposed, the motion to table this to next week passes 7-0, and so we'll do that. Okay, so then we can move on to the next item, hold on a second. It's tabled, all right, we move on to action item number seven, approval of MOA with BTA regarding spring 2020 coaching stipends.
Okay, so, this MOA maintains the continuity of communication between varsity coaches and their athletes. Similar to surrounding districts, this MOA recognizes the critical value our coaches have in the lives of our student athletes, along with the time and effort that occurs prior to the start of the season. Simply a varsity coach does not solely develop its program during the season, but rather works throughout the year to promote their athletes' best for spirited competition when the season finally begins. And this is often reflected through preseason workouts and ongoing meetings and planning. This MOA ensures that the expectations for our coaches, for our varsity coaches, are consistent across our spring sports program for these varsity athletes, so as to ensure continuity of expectations and provide support during a time of grave disappointment and solace due to the cancellation of this spring season. This MOA also substantially reduces payment to spring JV coaches and eliminates payment in its entirety with modified coaches, resulting in an overall significant cost savings for the district. Again, it's been reviewed by our district council, who work closely with our athletic director, Dean Berardo, and is subject, of course, to your approval this evening.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
This is Glenn Niles making a motion, first motion.
Thank you, and a second, please.
This is Scott, I'll make a second.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions or comments on this item?
There'll be measurable items in place that the coaches have to complete, let's say stepping stones to show that they did everything that was required of them to get the stipend.
I'm sorry, Scott, I'm not sure if you were asking me a question, I missed.
Yeah, the MOA has steps that have to be taken and things that have to be completed to show that they have had the contact, have done the information, have benefited our, let's say, senior students, athletes at this time.
Correct. So, the board will note in the actual MOA, there's clear directives that allow the district to hold coaches accountable for these expectations.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I would, you know, I am unsettled by it, to be perfectly honest. You know, I understand that the coaches have done things while the kids have been out of school, but, you know, the spring season didn't happen for these kids. They didn't have practice every day, they didn't have games, they didn't have bus rides to games, and, you know, I feel like it's almost like a different end to the same story. That said, I understand that this was negotiated with the union, and that as a result of that negotiation, you know, we're only paying JV coaches a portion, and we're not paying the modified coaches, and that that negotiation, you know, took place and was achieved because we don't want to have it lead to a grievance from the, from the Teachers Association. So, you know, it's a tough spot for everyone. Coaches earn every dollar and more during a regular season. It's just that the season, you know, it didn't take place. So, that's what makes me, you know, a little unsettled about it, but I do recognize the benefits that have come from the negotiation and the MOA that's before us, which will result in savings to the district.
Okay, any other questions or comments or thoughts on this item?
I mean, oh, go ahead Glenn, I'm sorry.
No, sorry. I feel the same way to some extent in regards to, you know, the season, to Carrie's point, the season didn't take place, and, you know, looking at how it's laid out, I feel that, you know, it should have been, if anything, all the coaches should have gotten something out of this if that was the case, and it just feels a little different to not be what, I know there are some things in regards to what's expected as a modified coach versus a JV and a varsity, varsity levels, but it's still an unsettling situation, but knowing that we did have to go, we went to the union, and we did come back with a grievance that is currently suitable, it's still an uneasy acceptance. As a coach, it's not something, a season didn't occur in my eyes, but again, it's, we're still trying to preserve what we can.
Eric, were you, who was, somebody else was going to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna just chime in. I mean, it's very hard to, at first look, you know, I think somebody said that certain teams had maybe just a handful of practices, no games, no anything, and I can understand where people would say, then what is it that we're paying for? But when you hear some of the stories from the athletes about how, after, you know, everything that they've lost, it was the coaches who stood up and who, you know, really connected with them, and the other things that they did, it's, I don't think it's a, I very much appreciate the negotiations that went on and the hard work that went into it. I wouldn't go back and try to redo anything. Some of the terms are a little awkward, and, you know, varsity coaches do, they coach, they're, they are varsity coaches all year round, and so there is an understanding of that and a respect for that. And, but, you know, I do understand sort of the concern that, you know, after just a handful of practices and no games, that there are questions about it. So, it's not, it's not the best, but I'm very happy that, you know, the coaches have stepped up and maintained the connections with their teams and tried to provide something, especially to the seniors who, you know, spring sports, they never got a chance to play their senior year. So, it's not a perfect deal, but I think it's necessary. And, oh, the other point I was going to make real quick was, we do need to remember that this isn't something we're granting to them or we're just giving to them, that the original iteration, they, all the coaches had a contract to be compensated for this. There was not, I don't think there was anything in there before that that said if this entire school year is canceled, the rest of the whole spring semester is canceled, then we'll do something different. I mean, we would have had to fight to get this contract taking, you know, knocked down to a reasonable level, and I think this agreement reflects a good amount of reason.
And I might have missed it, was it covered? Like, just, not that it matters because every district has to make its own decision for its own unique situation, but just in terms of, you know, what other districts are doing, I'm guessing it's probably just as tough for all districts around us to decide, you know, how to handle the situation. So, you know, everyone's, yeah?
I'm just gonna speak in general terms. Any, anything that's heading our way right now because of COVID-19, this decision or other decisions, I'm always, we're always comparing with the region, what's happening in the region. So, yes, other districts are, other districts are paying all of their coaches, and other districts are doing what we're doing. So, I think we, I think foreign attorneys worked a very good MOA for the district, from what I see in other regions.
Okay, and I guess it's important to note, I forgot who said it earlier, that there's still a savings involved, while it's not ideal, but there's still a significant savings found through this. So, we can, you know, utilize that as well for other necessities. Okay, does anyone else, first I just want to ask, does somebody, somebody has like background noise going on that's a little loud? Maybe it's just the feedback on a speaker. Okay, so, what was I going to say? What's next? All right, anyone else, does anyone else have any questions or comments or thoughts on this, or are we ready to go to a vote?
Sonia, I'd like to say something.
Please.
This is very easy for me to vote upon. I can tell you, varsity girls across coaches were well involved with these girls for months and months and months before this season started, wall ball Wednesdays, pancake breakfast, and they've been like that for years. So, for us, for people to just talk about just the season and the Monday through Friday games and practices, the two hours of practice here, you know, the three, four hours for a game and a bus ride, doesn't take into account hours these coaches put in, not to mention the effort they put in to put in that drive-by senior night for my daughter and the rest of the team. They are well worth what they are entitled to, both by the contract and just by good nature. So, like I said, this is, this is an easy one for me.
Okay, thank you Danny. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll go to a vote on this action item, number seven. We'll begin with Krista Berardi, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Carrie, can you speak up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Hines?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. With none opposed, motion passes 7-0. Okay, we move on now to, can everyone maybe mute themselves, just so I'm not sure what... Does anyone else hear that, or is it just me hearing it?
I hear it.
Yeah, Sonia, trying to...
Okay.
Take care of that.
Sorry. Okay, we move on to action item number eight, approval of separation agreement for employee number 945.
Yes, so this action item reflects the separation agreement for, with employee 945.
So, I need a motion, please, for this item.
I'll make the motion, it's Krista Berardi.
Thank you, and a second?
Carrie?
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board on this item? Sorry. Okay, no questions or comments in this item? Then we go on to a vote. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Danny Hines?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes, and I swear I'm not vacuuming.
I'm trying. Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. With none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. We move on to action item number nine, approval of MOA, SEIU emergency closure agreement, five, six, 20, 20.
Okay, thank you, Sonya. So given that we now know schools will be closed for the remainder of the school year, this MOA reflects the next and final iteration of our agreement with the SEIU to maintain payroll with our employees in this bargaining unit. Due to no fault of their own and the circumstances of this health crisis, no employee in this bargaining unit is presently able to work a full work week. In return, employees in this unit will be required to complete additional online training prior to the end of the school year. While the district has shown good faith in maintaining consistency in payroll for each of our employees in this SEIU is recognized as good faith gesture and one day's pay will be forfeited from each member during the final pay period for the school year. Finally, as per the terms of this agreement, each full-time employee will have two days reduced from their annual sick day allotment and one day for part-time employee. And finally, I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize Artie Campbell and Anne Marie Chalmers for their advocacy on behalf of this challenging time. Again, this MOA has been both crafted and reviewed by our district attorney after much discussion between the district and the SEIU leadership and is subject for your approval this evening.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please.
Eric makes the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
I'm coming, sorry. I second it. I'm trying to hit the arrow.
Thank you, Danny. Motion second. Okay, questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Hines?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. With none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. We move on to action item number 10, approval of resolution for terms and conditions of employment for the confidential secretary to the superintendent of schools and district clerk.
Yes, that will be mine. So this action item is to fill very, very big shoes of Susan Gavin, who has been my wonderful secretary and district clerk and has served the district well over the last several years. So this is to appoint Lauren Zagorski Trul, who comes to us from the Tuckahoe Union Free School District in New York State. Lauren was in the exact same position as Susan has been, and she's been in that position for several years. She comes to us with very high references, wonderful recommendations. So I put this before the board for approval tonight to approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please.
Glenn makes the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Scott makes the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Sonya, can I say one? Can I say one thing? Lauren is with us tonight, so I just want you to know that she's listening in. She's here.
Gotta be nice.
I'd like to welcome Lauren and once again express my gratitude to Susan and our sadness on losing her.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we go to our vote. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Hines?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Thank you. And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. With none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. Okay. It's hard. We often have people stand up and say something, but we'll have to have another, another time to do that. We move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, yes, thank you. Just quickly, the board will note Christine Belcher's resignation as personnel specialist. I just would like to personally express my gratitude for her work in supporting our department and wish her well as she transitions back to Pauling. Additionally, the board and the public will note Ms. Mary Carroll's retirement from the district effective at the end of next school year. Mary has stoically handled all employee healthcare benefits for the district for the past several years. And while we have time to certainly celebrate Mary's career over the course of next year, we certainly want to wish her a warm congratulations. Also, just as a point of information and reference, the board will note that there's several transfers and assignment for next school year. Transfers most often are a result of staffing needs that may shift from year to year depending on a variety of factors, including class size and anticipated number of sections in a building. So as such, teachers certification and tenure areas drive these changes that may require a staff member to be reassigned to a different building. So we'll note that there are three transfers that are noted on this evening's consent agenda. And finally, as was previously highlighted by Dr. Banlow, certainly understand that it was a long, arduous and anxiety process, and we certainly, again, extend our warmest congratulations to Ms. Lauren Zagorski Trul in joining the Brewster community.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll motion it. It's Krista.
Thank you. In a second.
Carrie.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to our vote. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Hines?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. With none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. And we move on to remarks, public remarks. So I do have a few emails that came in on a few things. So first, some were covered already earlier in the meeting today. Some questions had to do with just BEF. There was recently a lot of stuff going on about BEF and some confusion with, you know, the district and BEF. And Lori, I think you clarified that earlier today, earlier in the meeting, that it's its own entity. And, you know, obviously their work is, exists for, you know, the betterment of, of the students and the, the teachers of the district. So thank you for clarifying that. We also had the Brewster High School graduation committee update, a little bit of an update there and also for Wells. Basically that, you know, there's a lot of talk, work going on behind the scenes and that communications will be coming out. I think it was said closer to the end of May. As some more decisions are made on that, if I got all that right. And if anyone wants to add anything to those topics.
Sonya, could I jump in?
Please.
So as, as everybody on the board knows, but I'm the BEF liaison. And first of all, I just want to thank Dr. Banlow and the district for the, the, the assistance with the communication over the last few weeks as far as getting, getting our word out as, as far as what's going on. I just wanted to take a few minutes to kind of give a little bit of background. Dr. Banlow is exactly right. We are, the BEF is a completely separate organization, was founded over 30 years ago. And the original goal of the, of the BEF and what they continue to do is to fund micro grants for teachers to provide equipment and supplies for their students. And then over the years, we've also used the trust that, that the community has in the BEF to administer a number of merit-based scholarships. And so obviously, the BEF, that, you know, it's, it's literally just parents in the community, some of whom don't even have kids in the schools anymore who continue to fundraise and to manage the funds and do the best we can to provide. So most people know about a week or so ago, some information went out that we weren't going to be able to meet the commitments, the financial commitments that we had made to the class of 2020. That was originally, that decision was originally made because in the, in the, as the, the shutdown happened and New York went on pause, we were very reluctant to go out and try to fundraise in that environment. And so the decision was made that we were gonna sort of try to defer, push, push that down the line until we could fundraise a little bit more successfully and then hopefully meet those, those commitments that we'd made to the students prior. Obviously, this community has shown that they are willing to go very deep and, and, and their commitment to the class of 2020 is strong. And so we were, you know, it was, it was, we were informed that, that if we asked for the community's assistance, then the community would provide it. And so that's what we did. If you checked your bear's backpack today, there's a letter that went out about our, our BEF Rise Up campaign for 2020. And just wanted to let everybody know, we appreciate already, the, the numbers are already coming in, the return is already good. All the money that's raised for this campaign is gonna go directly to meet the commitments to the class of 2020 and to maintain solubility going forward. So please, just, I would encourage everybody to go to our website, which is bef.org to learn more information, find out more of what's going on. And especially if you have the means and the opportunity to donate, then we would very much appreciate it. And, and we, we look forward to having the opportunity to do for the class of 2020 what they absolutely deserve. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so a few more emails that came in had to do with, and I think, you know, we directed them over to the high school, but there were just some questions about senior prom deposits and different things that were going on. And I know that, you know, we forwarded those parents to communicate with the principal at the building over there. And I'm not sure that we have answers here tonight, but just to make a comment at least here with the public that, you know, we did receive those emails and that, you know, the issues are being addressed. Okay. And let's see, we also had some.
On that, Sonya, I think.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I think a communication went out.
Oh, was there response? Because I, yeah, we're not only to seniors, and so I wouldn't, we wouldn't have gotten it, I guess. Did it address it? It would have gone to just the senior, you know, senior email base.
Yeah, they're rolling over the deposit, a couple of the things related to expenditures ever laid out to try to make it up for next year. And I'm assuming the same thing's gonna be done with the junior classes prom, they'll probably roll that over. Kiwi, there's no cost. That obviously was tragically canceled for the senior class. And some of the other items they're dealing with. If there's, you know, just like anything else, like Victor says about bills, if you see something that we've forgotten about, please send in a note and they'll get, you know, right on keeping, you know, track what it is and getting information out.
Okay, thank you. There were some questions about well, locker frustration, just in general, students accessing their, their stuff and in all the different buildings. But since then, a communication has gone out addressing that information will be coming out to clearly indicate how and when students were able to retrieve their personal belongings. And a comment was also made on teacher access to their, their stuff, their classroom, their, there's, you know, anything they had left behind as well. And I believe that was also addressed that teachers would also be given and, you know, access going forward. And there was, you know, the question had to do with, maybe it could have been arranged sooner. You know, and it's, here we are. So we're just, we're gonna do the best we can and you know, address everything as we go forward.
Mrs. Masika, can you jump in with that? I'll just, I'll just say that. With so much of this, we've been in a holding pattern, you know, having kids pick up their belongings before we knew for sure that school was going to be closed and then getting all the pieces together in order to make sure that we were doing it safely and, and correctly is, is another thing. So just an update tomorrow, we have a meeting with Mr. Fryer, our director of facilities, to make sure we have a K-12 coordinated effort. We'll make sure we communicate that out and we'll, we'll do our best to make it as convenient and definitely as safe for, for families and students to pick up belongings as we move into the next few weeks.
Yeah, Sonya, can I also, thank you, Dr. Gosh. I wanna chime in also. All really good questions. A lot of our delay, of course, is we're waiting for the governor's orders regarding social distancing before we make final decisions for graduation, for example. So we have to wait for that information to come out. We also, as Dr. Gosh had mentioned, at the leadership council meetings, the principals are very carefully and methodically working in conjunction with our school physician. We want to get the medications back to the kids that are in the nurse's office. We want the kids to be able to come in in a safe way, social distancing, to be able to pick up the stuff out of their lockers. Same thing with the teachers. So we have to do it carefully, probably by appointment. I think somebody made that suggestion, good suggestion, to make sure that we do, we protect everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we did get an email that came in kind of last minute, so I apologize. I did miss it originally, but it just had to do with what was on our agenda for this evening and just questions. But Brent, you addressed it already, but it had to do with just, you know, teachers being moved in different buildings and why that was done. And you discussed, you know, that sometimes it's unfortunate, but when there's a need and, and depending on the parameters of a person's, you know, they have to do what we have to do. So, and I think that's it. I'm just double checking. I think that was it for emails. If I did miss anyone, I apologize. We do get back to your email as well. And please feel free to email the board with any questions that you may have as follow-up. It comes to the board and the superintendent at boe@brewsterschools.org. And are there any other board remarks, committee updates that anyone wants to talk about?
I just throw a couple of things out there. Wanted to start off with thanking, you know, the teachers, the staff, the administration for what we're going through at this time. We're making, you know, drop the ball from time to time, but this has never happened before. But I especially wanna reach out to the parents. I luckily have older kids, so my kids are self-sufficient. I can't imagine the trouble that it is with little people, teaching, working, doing all at once. And especially out to our students. You know, I do have a senior. I understand a lot of what they have lost and what they're going through. So, you know, I appreciate all the work that, you know, they're trying to do and they're all handling it in their own ways. Some good news, we just had three Eagle Scouts that just passed their boards, which bring us to a total of five Eagle Scouts for this year. We have Andrew DeFabio, Keith Rusinko, Nicole Haywood, Liam Payne, and Stephen Santa Maria. So we have five people out there now who've gone through this. They even did their Eagle Scout review board like this via Zoom. So it's even, they are learning new things and they even accomplished a drive-by to celebrate the new Eagle Scouts. You know, we arranged to go by their houses and honk the horns like everybody else does. And to follow up on, I don't know how to say this. I've been locked in my house for a long time. And as the people on the board know, I tend to roll off sometimes, so I will apologize in advance. We're all in this right now. We're trying to figure this out. We need to stick together. We need to stand for our kids. We don't need to, for lack of a better phrase, attack each other or lash out at people. Now is not the time. We all have problems. I have not worked at all this year. I understand the financial aspect, but we cannot turn on each other, especially not in front of our kids. They will do what we do. And if we attack and lash out at each other, they will as well. So they're not learning anything except for to be, for lack of a better phrase, because I promised my wife I wouldn't use any swear words, a jerk. So we just have to do our best. The graduation committee will be coming out with lots of information. Some they want to surprise the kids with, so it all will be out. Other districts have more information out than we do, but to be honest, they might be making promises they can't keep. So I think it's better if we get as much out there when we can. There are a number There are a number of students on the committee that have been giving the input, and the poor Aaron is still sitting on this, he's been through way too many of those meetings as well, and they are listening to the students and they want, no matter what we do, wait and do any fine kind, even if we delay, and if we could, we would, it doesn't look like we will be able to, but please, you know, not that. And if you have any questions, please keep sending them in, there's a lot of things we will miss, but please do not throw accusations out there, especially like with the BEF, I'm, they made a mistake, they've lived up to it, and the community has rise up and they're gonna help them, so please just continue the good work. And, and that, that's it, I guess, after we yelled that by my wife.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else want to add anything? Okay, so upcoming meeting, next Tuesday, we'll be back here again, and I already said about emailing us, we don't have executive session, right? Anyone, nothing? No? Okay, good. So I just need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Eric makes a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, in a second.
Danny seconded it.
Okay, and... We'll do a roll call vote on that, so we can close up the meeting. Krista Bararty?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Danny Hines?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Is that you? Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. None opposed, we are adjourned, thank you, seven zero, we can go home. Good night, everyone, thank you so much.